You go on to the school district website?
I was just trying to get into the computer. Then this one's gonna kick me back home.
You're not visiting this place, man?
Yeah.
Friday. Had a meeting, but we really want to make sure we record it last week, not today, so I'm putting it down for you. It's the night Saturday, I'm recording locally on the school district.
And are you new to us?
Just say.
Welcome, everyone. I'm officially calling our regular January school board meeting to order. And taking roll call, please note that all directors are here in person and healthy. Everyone looks healthy anyway. That's great. Knock on all the wood, okay?
We don't have to give a report out though.
No, okay, do I have to volunteer to read the mission and vision statements?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
At the Core Community School District, we embrace student learning and well-being as a fundamental purpose. We will, in partnership with our students, families, and community, make the world a better place. The mission of the Decore Community School District is learning, thriving, creating our legacy. The vision is the Core Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning-centered organization, empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future.
Thank you. We have one item of old business, which is the second reading of number six oh five oh eight. This is regarding artificial intelligence in the educational environment. And six oh five oh eight R one, which is artificial intelligence in the educational environment. So as a reminder to the board, this is our second reading, we had our first reading last month. This has been drafted by lawyers from ISAB. And this is new terrain for public schools. So any, any points of discussion or questions that we should talk through?
You just ask the artificial intelligence if there is, and it would tell us.
Right? But you're never supposed to take the first feedback question, you're supposed to ask more questions and more questions, which I am informed about because I went to the session at the conference in November, it was really. Great, but I think in this new world that we're living in, the pace that technology is developing is staggering. And AI, our students need to leave to poor schools and enter into the world with some knowledge of how to use AI. And I think this is a great beginning to inform staff. And I just, I hope that in addition to passing this policy that Dr. Cronin, that you will work with the admin team to make sure that staff are supported and are provided with everything they need to be successful.
Absolutely, and just kind of a reminder, and I think we talked about this in our pre meetings last week. Understand that board policies are usually pretty general, and they get more specific with, with the local handbook policies. So if you're looking for policy that says you can't use this specific website, or you can, you know, Grammarly or Chat G P T. It won't say that in here, that will be the kind of thing that, that may be vetted out in a, in a school handbook. But keep in mind that the artificial intelligence changes all the time. So what you want to do is have parameters with these, but, but board policies are more general, and then you funnel them down to specific. And, and the other thing besides the level of specificity, understand that this might be a policy that we look at more frequently than, than we do with others. Just because it is an ever, ever evolving, changing field.
Is there anything in the middle school or high school handbook at this point on students, students or staff using artificial intelligence?
Yeah, there's references to academic integrity, we've had that policy in place for a while. And so we've done some things to, we've done some education and some allowance about our official education as a director, good nurse point. And we've also done things, of course, to encourage authentic original thoughts and some of those things as well. But as such, we're obviously working to continue to update things. I was just listening to PR on the way here, and you were talking about the MAG seven and how they've all been hard. Artificial intelligence invested billions of dollars in, in, in MAG seven, like Meta, Microsoft, like all these companies that are like controlling a lot of whatever, so certainly to Director Goodness' point, a lot of a lot of money is being invested in AI futures right now among corporations. So students would be wise to know a little bit about it, I suppose, since they're in the workforce.
And this policy, I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that it's saying like it's protecting against all the bad stuff, but also it talks about protecting students' identity and data. And also just how to be transparent about when it's used, because this is not, I mean, with a policy in place. I, I know that I personally, when I was in the session at the ISAB conference in November, I went from the perspective of using a, or things that I hear in my household, using AI is like cheating. And I think it, it can be used as a useful tool to get you to where you want to go. But transparency is an important part of that, of explaining how you got there. And yeah, our students and, and staff are just going to need a lot of support in navigating these new tools as well.
I find the policy, it's all the main points that I think about around privacy, but also educational components on how we want this to be utilized. I see the college side of it all the time, kids talking about, yeah, wrote my paper, and then I use Grammarly to spell check the whole thing. Okay, I hope you also read your paper after you use Grammarly. Can't speak to how that turned out for them, but there are certainly positive usages. We think back twenty years, spell check on Microsoft Word was a big change, very helpful, and so using AI appropriately and in good context, I think can be a great tool. But the tool is on how you use it, so.
Whether we want this to be an issue or not, is it relevant? It is, so we have to deal with it. I think the most important thing is Dr. Corona mentioned is this is going to keep changing. You know, it'll be horribly out of date in a year, so. But we do the best we can.
Yeah, I agree, it's a good starting point to lay some groundwork.
I'll move that we approve the second reading of policy six oh five oh eight, artificial intelligence in the educational environment. And policy six oh five oh eight R one. Which is same time.
I'll second that.
Okay, having a motion in a second, any further comments or just questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, I'll accept a motion to approve today's agenda unless there's suggested changes.
Zoom.
Well, second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next is approval of consent items, including minutes from our regular December meeting, as well as the special meeting on January sixth.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, hearing a motion in a second, any further questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next is open forum communication from the public, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Welcome. Great, I'm gonna read the statement to be official, official. As you know, with your previous work on the decor school board, thank you for your years of service. It is the goal of the district to provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum for every student in the decor community school. The open forum is a time set aside for the board to hear comments from the public. Comments are not limited to items or topics on the agenda, but are limited to the matters within the board's authority and are not to extend more than three minutes in length. As per Iowa code, the board cannot discuss matters not posted on the agenda. Also, please remember that comments that are being made in a public forum. And this meeting is recorded. Any comments that made are considered to be inflammatory, may be subject to legal action. So I'll just set a timer for three minutes, and I'll give you a friendly little wave if you get close to that. Okay, great.
Good evening, I'm Melanie Teets, and I served on the Decore School Board for twelve years, and a few of those years I was president. Great times. I enjoyed my time on the board and working for the community and trying to make a positive difference in the lives of our students. In the last several years, public education has been under attack. And efforts continue at the state level, and now it'll be at the federal level to undermine the most cherished infrastructure of our society. There are groups and politicians trying to usurp the authority of school boards, pushing their various agendas and undermining our system of public education. In Iowa, there is an organization called the Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. They spearhead several different initiatives, but one of them is called Public School Strong. The strategy involves getting citizens involved at the local grassroots level in public education issues in their district and being visible and supportive of school boards as they advocate for students and staff, and pushing back on negative destructive policies like private school vouchers and help bands. Luckily, this community values public education and is very supportive, and the recent bond vote speaks further to the evidence of that. We need to be vigilant and speak out with a loud voice about laws and policies at the state level that have a negative impact on our district and our students. And I have no doubt that the governor and her minions will continue their efforts to cripple public education in furtherance of their agenda. And while it's sometimes difficult for you all to speak out against that, it won't be for us. And we must. I have copied some information about the Public Strong Initiative that you have in front of you. And I want to thank you for your time tonight, but also especially for your time serving the Decore Community School District. Thanks.
Thank you. And darling, you have the information that you need for the notes.
Yeah, I'll just say that you have an extra note, these, yeah.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay. Next, we'll move on to our presentation. And we have Travis Squires here visiting from Piper Sandler. Thank you so much for traveling and being here in person tonight.
It's good to meet you. Do you care if I step up here?
Okay. I can, I can introduce you if you'd like.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Travis works with Piper Sandler, and they're a company, among other things, is a fiduciary agent, but provides counseling for school districts. Also, Piper Sandler works closely with Larry Siegel and the Iowa School Finance. Yeah. Information Services. Information Services, thank you.
Yeah.
And so we have earlier this year, I attended the five-year forecasting budget workshop, and for two thousand dollars, we could, we could upgrade our model, but from the free model to the pro model. And so we purchased the upgrade so that we could get some additional counseling, which is among other things here today. So Travis is going to just talk about what we know with our enrollment decrease. We did, we did have, we knew we were going to lose some of these, maybe we'll cancel students, but and so we don't get their, their funding in, but we also don't pay that funding out. But in addition, we did have a drop of about forty-nine and a half students. So how that impacts our budget, not immediately, but we will see that on our budget. So Travis, that's one thing, when you lose fifty students at eight thousand dollars a student, you need to think about, okay, making a cut of about quarter thousand dollars, and how soon do you make that? And will there be some factors that turn it around? What I love about the model, and I've played with it a lot, I'm certainly not, one iota as good as Travis is, but you can put in what SSA will be, what enrollment growth will be, and you can just kind of look and see how that impacts your five-year model. Keeping in mind, and I don't want to talk, take away all your thunder, but it is a five-year model, and you always want to look at it year to year basis so that you know where you're going to be at in five years, but you can adjust it because it is a fluid, and there are variables that come into play. I'll stop talking so that you can start presenting.
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me come up. As Dr. Cronin mentioned, Travis Squires and Piper Sandler. We work with school districts all across the state. We provide free tools, some paid tools, we work on bond issues, we kind of do the whole gamut of things associated with school finance. So what I'm gonna walk you through today, and I wanted to plug in, so if you had people watching, that they would be able to see a lot of the same information. So I'll just give a quick overview, I won't spend much time on it. What we'll be spending most of our time on is the CFPM model, which stands for comprehensive financial planning model. And so what we're going to walk through there is really a forecast on your general fund. And we talk, we start talking about tax rates, and then we talk about spending authority. Well, shouldn't flip that around, we talk about spending authority first. We'll talk about targeted expenses, expenses for the district, and then from there, we'll move into the tax rate implications. Your district, a little bit unique in that you just passed the bond issue in which you went out to the public and talked about taxes. So we want to walk through, you know, some goals that you can set as you work through that. And as Dr. Cronin mentioned, we work hand in hand with Larry Siegel's group. So we'll be at budget workshops, we do run fault conferences that I think were met, was mentioned, where we work with about two hundred and thirty-seven schools in the state working on their forecast. So not just a one-off thing that, that your district's using, there's probably seventy-five districts that are using the pro model version where they have us come speak to the public. So a little bit as we work through, and you have to bear with me, if anybody's in Adobe right now and realize that they changed the system, it is driving me nuts. So I just put a, a few things related to, you know, about our firm guiding principles, just the introduction about our office, we got a team, we have a team of six that works out of our Des Moines office. We're all native Iowans, other than one transplant kid who came from South Dakota and played soccer in Simpson. So I kind of call that is, maybe I shouldn't say that, Simpson. I mean, he played in the Iowa Conference, we'll just say that. We got families of farmers, teachers, small business owners, we're small-town Iowans. I grew up in Center Point, Iowa, so that's my hometown. I grew up there, I was a stormer in winter. I spent a couple of years playing baseball at Northwestern in Orange City, and then I finished up at UNI with a finance degree when I realized my fastball topped off at like eighty-five, and I'm, you know, all of five-nine on a good day. As in terms of what we do, you know, one of the big things we do is work with school districts on their operating budget. About ten years ago, we set out with Larry's group to provide a free tool for school districts. Couple reasons on that, one is, you know, we think it's really important for school districts to do a five-year forecast to be able to see what's on the horizon. And the Iowa School Finance formulas are a little bit complicated in that you get fluctuations, sometimes caused on your own, sometimes caused upon you. And we wanted to allow districts the ability to see what that would look like. And as we come into five-year forecast, I'm going to talk a lot about making a good one-year decision with your budget that doesn't jeopardize the five-year plan. Because a year from now, you should redo this, you should look out five years, and again, make that good one-year decision with the five-year plan in place. And that's what we're trying to look at on the horizon for your district as we look at potential enrollment stuff. Again, you can all read slides on a, on a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. And we just went to the front, there we go. Okay. Again, I put, I put in a ranking slide, just of note, you know, we work on about ninety percent of the total school district debt issuance in the state, so we've worked with two hundred and sixty-one of the two hundred and seventy-one districts that have issued debt within the state of Iowa. So again, we're, we're in and out of these meetings, we're usually one of us at a meeting somewhere in the state, almost every night of the week, sometimes two of us. So that's what we, what we do on a daily basis. Hit a few of these things on the, the forecast model, you know, one of the things that I do get on is what this model does, it creates a five-year forecast, but it recreates this budget process five years, you know, one year at a time. So we have a lot of confidence in how accurate the model is. If you have a lot of confidence in what your assumptions are, and those are the things that we, we need to talk about. Well, if we change this little tool toggle here, what happens? And then we'll walk through some of that tonight, if I can quit talking and get into the, the model. One of the things that we also do with this for districts is we use this model on the other side of our business, which is related to school financing and helping model out tax rates. One of the things that we, we recently worked with, and I don't know if this school district is going to go vote again, but you know, this past fall, there was a district that went out with a two-seventy bond issue, and it failed. When we went through using the forecast model, look at their overall tax rate, we think there's a good chance they can go out and make a, I'll say a promise to the taxpayers, or but a representation to the taxpayers that it really only should be a dollar per thousand increase, not the full two-seventy because of the way their other levies are working. So we, we've found some traction with helping school districts communicate more accurately what tax impacts will be. So we're going to go ahead and jump into the model. For those of you who love Excel, you know, you are going to have a great geek out section, session over the next thirty minutes. For those of you who would care not to see another spreadsheet in your life, you're like, math was over in eleventh grade, I got my three credits done, I don't want to touch it again. This is going to be not as much fun as we work through here. But I promise you, at the end of the night, I'll always throw a couple of charts in there that will make this a little bit more applicable, and if you're taking the big picture, so. One thing that you'll see in the model, hopefully this is going to pop up here, and again, you're, you're going to have a a, a difficult time reading that, so you're going to have to trust the numbers that I'm showing, so I'll kind of summarize as I go. So this dashboard here really starts the model, and so when, when Tim or Kathy open up the model, they're going to open it up, and they're going to have a dashboard up at the top. And do ignore the, the tax rates for now, you're probably not going to love those, because that goes up eighty-six cents next year, as you promised, but then it goes up another dollar the year after, and ninety cents the year after, or, or it goes down five cents the year after, and five cents the year after. But one of the things that you'll see is that I'm not going to solve first for tax rate. So the, the first thing that I want you to focus on as a school board is the concept called unspent authorized budget. So I hope you're familiar with that, for those of you in the crowd who are not, I'll give this just what I'll call a simple explanation. And the way I think about unspent authorized budget is that, given what the state provides you in a funding formula, and that would be represented as a, as a revenue per student that you receive, often called state supplemental assistant per student. Each year, multiply that by your enrollment, add in seven or eight, what I'll call kind of special designations, spending authority. You get an amount of spending authority that you can spend, and we'll just talk about in this year's budget. So in FY twenty-five, you have an amount of spending authority that's granted to you by the state. Now, but this has nothing to do with revenues. But it has to do with the amount of authority you're allowed to spend. And districts over the years will underspend that authority. So then what happens if you don't spend your authority one year, it carries over. And that carryover numbers what's commonly called the unspent authorized budget. So as a school district, you want to carry over some unspent authorized budget. If you don't want to have a year in which it goes negative on that cumulative number, otherwise you get to go before the school budget review committee. And then you basically get to testify how you're going to change the way you're operating and monitor things more closely. So the main purpose of this tool, at the end of the day, if nothing else, is to keep you away from the school budget review committee. Unless you can go to them and get some extra spending authority, they aren't always just the bad folks, sometimes they give you some extra spending authority. So that's a concept that if you can see in these key indicators, and unfortunately, I'm just going to have to kind of zoom in, zoom out so that public can also see what we're, what we're looking at here. As I mentioned, I'll say this multiple times now, do not get freaked out by the tax rate yet. We'll, we'll explain the solution there. The next thing that I show is property tax rate, but at the end of the day, that's the last thing I'm solving for. That might sound crass, that might sound like I just want to raise people's taxes. But ultimately, what you as stewards of the, the district call you fiduciaries in some ways, right? As a fiduciary of the school district, you have to balance two things. You know, one is revenues, right? As you know, folks don't want taxes raised in your district higher than they need to go. And for the most part, you can say really about ninety percent of what you have in tax rates is set for you by the state. Whether that's the size of your enrollment, the SSA rate, or various things within your tax base that you necessarily don't have control over, you do have control over a few things, and we'll, we'll wade through what those are. I look at two different ratios as being quite important. The one, I'll call U A B as a percentage of current year authority. And basically, what I'm trying to represent there is a form of solvency for the school district. And so if you see, in this case, I'm showing four point two million of unspent authorized budget, that represents seventeen point six percent of your current year authority. So the question is then, how much do I want in surplus? What's a good target? I think the, I think ISB has come up with a range, U A B ratio like fifteen to twenty-five percent. So you're right in a good range. Now, some districts adopt their own ratios that you want to solve for, and that's fine, but the, that becomes probably the one biggest thing that I'm looking at in setting your budget, that policy. Where do you want your U A B ratio to go? Because these, these are the things that get school districts shut down, or before the school budget review committee. You know, if you, technically, if you run two years of a deficit in your unspent authorized budget, the state can shut you down. So this is by far the most important metric that we want to focus on. Solvency ratio is a much more simpler concept, it's basically cash in the bank divided by your expenditures. In other words, how much lead time do you have in what we call a solvency ratio? Most school districts have a policy of maintaining between seven and seventeen percent. That would be the ISB recommended levels. Now, sometimes with bond rating agencies, you might adopt a higher policy limit. And if you choose to do so, do it at your own peril, because there is one thing that is unique in Iowa School Finance, and that's if, if you go over twenty percent, you're likely to go down to seven. You end up riding this roller coaster because of the way the school finance formulas work. And I'll explain a few of the things that drive that later, so everybody good with the quick, quick overview. Now, as I start working through assumptions, and I'll, I'll move pretty quick here. The first assumption that's important in this model is we are making an assumption on where the state's going to set the SSA rate. Now, I don't have any special knowledge of what's going to happen over the next five years, nor of what's going to happen this year. I think it's anybody's guess, because they're toying on the side with this teacher salary supplement dollars, and they're kind of using that as leverage against giving you just what I'll call clean state supplement. State supplemental aid. Um, you know, I would just say, take away this categorical. Love the fact that you're raising minimum salaries for teachers, but can you just give us all the money so that we can decide how we wanna use it? It's not their, it's not what they wanna do. Um, so you have to deal with that raise and it's set by a certain amount. And it's not even equitable how much they're giving th- these dollars across the state, so. I don't know if you're a winner or loser in that ga- game, or.
A slight, a very slight winner. We were, at least we weren't one of the districts that lost money on the deal.
Okay, good. Um, hopefully it hasn't reversed its course this year, cuz they are planning to try to give you some more money. The problem is they'll use that and say, hey, we gave you three point two five percent new money, but. The S S A rate was two point two five. Um, for your district, it sounds like. It helped, but it was mandated, so then therefore, the benefit on your staff could only go into certain pockets, so. Anyway, off that soapbox, um, we, we can talk about that soapbox later if you want. Enrollment then is the next driver, so we have your, your fall enrollment. Um, you know, a couple notes here. Um, you are down on the certified enrollment, shown as that actual enrollment there. Uh, rate about fifty-eight, fifty-nine students. Um, in addition to that, um. You know, you, you saw some other trends that, that weren't in your favor, meaning that your open enrollment. Out actually also went up, right? So stack that on to losses and enrollment. Now, if your enrollment loss is at such a level, um. That, you know, it, it exceeds an amount, you will get the state to backfill those. A portion of those dollars for one year. Um, but the problem with that is, is you can comparable like, oh, well, my U A B didn't go down, well. Guess what? All your U A B grew up next year, that one-time money gets pulled out. Um, and, and that is one thing that you're currently facing, and I'll show you how you can see that math um within your budget. Um, additionally then, um, your valuations, we'll enter those in, and really, we're ready to rock and roll. Now, the things that we've done within the model so far, um, is we have put. An assumption in enrollment. Now, we have the ability to fluctuate enrollment, you know, we can change it by a number to the right or left. You know, right here, I can put add five kids per year. And it, I don't know if you could see that, but if I add five kids per year. My spending authority grows by seven hundred thousand dollars over the next forty, five years. So let's sign up for that. Anybody in audio, five more kids per year? Yeah, there, you know, there are things there, right? If, if you've got some, some opportunities there. Um, other things that we can do i- i- is look at an enrollment model and hear that. Looks at what I'll call your, your butts in seats, so this isn't your resident or your certified enrollment, but this would be more, you know, butts in seats. The beds enrollment, and all we're doing here is looking at, well, how does this work when, you know, grades age through? Um, for, for your district with some sharing. It's not, it's not really as easy to, to pick up, so we, we've gotta make, you know, assumptions about your T K. You know, your TK kids, they accounted as kindergartners, but then they don't go to first grade, right? Because they're in that re- a repeater year, so therefore we have to back them out, so, so there's a way to, to use this. Uh, model um to, to forecast enrollment. Um, but, but for now, um, we're just going to look at kind of a flat enrollment scenario and then be prepared to pivot. At the end of the night, you know, we can run a few scenarios. They won't make you feel good about yourself, so um, we'll, we'll run them. Uh, so that you're aware of what happens and how sensitive this really is to enrollment. Um, additionally, there's a few other things, um. Your, your special education program, and I'm just gonna take a, a moment to hit on this. Um, I'll, you know, walk through this sensitively. Um, for your district, uh, you had an expensive year, as I would call it, with respect to your special education programming. Doesn't mean anybody did anything wrong, right? Um, you're required to provide I E P support for those students on those I E Ps. Sometimes, these are students that may have not be educated in your district, but are residents here. Therefore, they go offsite, you get a bill back at the end of the year. I don't know the scenario here, just know that that was a driver on what's causing some tax rate pressure. Um, if you end up staying in the scenario where you have about a million dollar specialized deficit. Um, now, what the specialized deficit simply is, is that based on state funding formulas, you get a certain weighting. Per level of student, that provides a, a revenue stream. Then you have an expense stream. If the revenues and expenses don't match, you run a specialized deficit. If you run a specialized deficit, you still get all the spending authority for that, so you know, we talked about how you get a certain number of. Dollars per kid to educate, special letting outside of that, so if you ever have a budget problem, and you say, well. Let's just cut special ed associates, because we're overspending our budget, that's not gonna help. At all, because you'll lose, dollar for dollar, you'll lose authority out of there. Where it does help is on the tax rate side, so being an efficient. Uh, user within your special education programming does help the tax rate. Um, because all of these dollars that are quote-unquote special ed deficit. Uh, flow through to property tax needs, because those revenues are not funded with the state, so you have to make them up locally.
But one of the things about the model, um, is it, it shows the, the. It not just projects out five years, but it shows what we've had in the past. For example, on the specialized deficit, you can kind of see at the bottom, and we've really bounced around a lot, uh. You know, we were a mil- a little over a million dollars this year, the previous year. It was like the three hun- we were in three hundreds for a couple of years, then we were four thirty, and then we were. Back in twenty twenty, we were, uh, our deficit was seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so.
And, and we did see this a lot with, during the S R years, that there was some Medicaid money. Uh, that, that would flow through and assist, so a lot of districts had suppressed. Specialized deficits for a couple of years around the state. Um, so the fact that if we look at it on a like percentage of your budget. That's seven hundred and sixty thousand back in FY twenty is actually a pretty similar amount as a million, so it's not like it's. Out of the ordinary, it's just you were used to it being a little bit lower for the, for the past few years. So, does anybody have any questions on that? I know that's getting into the weeds a lot. Uh, but I do wanna, uh, it'll come back to why I think you've got a few tax rate pressure things. Uh, this has been, this is one of them, and the second one is your enrollment loss, and I'll, I'll walk through why that becomes tax rate pressure in a minute. So a couple of the other things that you deal with, uh, special authority that are outside. A district has something called dropout prevention, so you get dollars for this. Um, you know, you, you probably went through in the recent months, your claim on dropout prevention, your district is at the maximum there. Um, those are dollars that have some flexibility, pay counselors, et cetera. Um, you might have other creative uses for that, but that's the, one of the most commons, but most common ones. Um, operational sharing, not something that your district really does a lot of. Um, districts your size around the state don't do a lot of sharing. I mean, you're large enough to kind of handle through your programming. Um, that being said, you know, there are some districts that are finding creative ways to. Well, if we've got a couple of folks in the business office, can you lend one day of your business official? I'll lend one day of one of my business officials, and you can figure out a way to create sharing without creating any extra. Salaries per se. Um, so if you were to do that, the, the state would grant you the equivalent of four extra students. They just pretend like you have four extra students, and therefore you get an extra thirty-two thousand of spending authority. Those are taxed out, taxed dollars, so, right? You, you have to make those up. Um, as property taxes, if, if you go through sharing. And again, it flows through the formulas, but you can see there's a lot of positions there, you share the social worker position. Um, that's really been about all you've done historically. Um, and now again, I'm not suggesting changes there. You do have an instructional support levy. Um, I did wanna, I left this in here to go over, because. It does end at the end of fiscal twenty-six, so it's something that you wanna be thinking about at the end of this calendar year. Your district has renewed those every five years at the board level. Um, so it's a resolution, it authorizes school district to have a ten percent increase. On your uh budget, and three hundred and twenty-four of the three hundred and twenty-five districts across the state have this already. Um, so it's something that. I would, if the one district decided to implement it, uh, the state would probably just go ahead and make the bump so that you don't have to keep doing, but they. Local decision has not been made to do that yet. Um, there are a few other things within spending authority, um, you know, one thing that has. Taken place over the last couple of years, you know, we've seen. Things such as miscellaneous income, which is basically all funding outside of state aid and property taxes. Um, has fluctuated, um, and that's largely due to the presence of the S R dollars. Those all float through in the general fund, no matter where you spent them, so if you spend it on an HVAC project. You transfer money out of the general fund to pay for it, and it showed up as revenues in the general fund. So it's an important component of the overall forecast as we're working through it. Now, all of these things that we put together so far have created. Um, a budget number that I'm gonna call your break-even spending number. Um, and I'm gonna walk through, based on all of these assumptions. How I think your break-even spending number plays out over the next five years. Um, recognizing that FY twenty-four. Um, was a year in which you had some S R dollars uh still flowing through. But this break-even spending number goes from twenty-three point five six million. To twenty-three point nine, to twenty-four point two, to twenty-four point four. Twenty-four point nine, twenty-five point five, twenty-six point one. Now, those all sound like nice growth numbers, right? Like, well, it's, it's growing every year. And, and that would be true, but you're gonna be amazed at how quickly uh that. Number goes away, um, in particular, this year, where you go from twenty-four point one nine or twenty-four point two. To twenty-four point four. That is less than one percent growth in your budget from FY twenty-six to FY twenty-seven. So what I'm gonna suggest you do is go ahead and settle your two-year agreement with your teachers and get one percent on that set a year. That, that's, that, that'll be ideal, right? I'm, I'm sure that'll win you a lot of fans, and it'll.
Wait, we should make sure that you're, you're saying that somewhat facetiously.
Oh, a hundred percent. I was, I was hoping somebody would pick that up.
Well, I, I did, but.
Uh, wow, I need to work on the delivery. My apologies.
Uh, and I, and I suppose there's always a, a scenario by which if the first year is five percent, the second year could be one percent.
Yeah, well, first year's one and a half, and the second year's one, yeah, those work too. Um, these are all, you know, we're, we're saying this semi facetiously, and, and I'm probably getting a hard heart on this, because. Over the course of the last year, as we watch. Year and year, year after year of state funding at two and a half to three percent. Sounds like a great year, except you're running ten percent inflation. And what do you have to give in order to keep staff and what happens to your energy costs and all of those things? It, it's set up like this for a lot of districts. Now, you may think as I walk through this, that I'm delivering. A hard message, but for me, it does almost become a little bit like Groundhog Day, like, I wake up. I'm in a di- a different district, a lot of the facts look exactly the same, they had one bad year of enrollment. But this whole thing has been supercharged by multiple years in a row of state funding at low levels. And then when you get one year of enrollment that blips, it looks like a bomb went off. Um, and so, yours is not quite to the extent where your U A B or that break-even spending number goes down. Um, but it is really narrow on, on a few of those years. Now. This is probably where, you know, I would say this is more art than science. Um, it's, it's math certainly. But you can see that I've, I've built up some key indicators here, and if I can get this to center just appropriately, there we go. Uh, and the unspent authorized budget is the thing that I was targeting. Um, in setting spending. Now, your spending may be lumpier than this, right? Like, you know, I get the advantage of having a spreadsheet and I can. Uh, you're in the position of, while you have people and staff and budgets for energy and all those things. And you have to try to make those fit within those numbers, which is why, yes, you can see that I've got break-even spending. You know, largely rate at a hundred percent. Sometimes you'll go to one-on-one, right? Sometimes you'll be at ninety-nine, you know, it's usually not perfectly linear. And we'll walk through a, a history of this for the district here i- in a minute as well. Um, so what this model then allows us to do is, is there are. Five different ways of, of changing expenses that we built into the model, and you can pick and choose all of them, they all work together. Um, you know, one in particular is just changing the, the total amount of annual expenditures by a certain amount. Um, the one I'm most in favor of is, is going by category. Um, so you, what you can see here is, you know, your, your various expense categories, whether that's salary benefits. Purchase services, et cetera, um, you know, trying to come up with numbers. Uh, that you would expect those to grow, you know, if you expect to settle. For example, at two and a half or three percent on salaries, or whatever S S A rate ends up being. You can plug that number in here and it'll flow through the model. Um, additionally then, you know, you can look at things that are reductions, you know, for example. In FY twenty-five, we know some of the S R funding from talking with your staff. Is allocated in a couple of these areas, and that there could be some uh reductions in expenditures there. In the purchase service category and property category, so we went ahead and pulled those out. Um, and then, you've got places for one-time expenses, you make a curriculum purchase, you buy a bus, and then if there's any sort of. You know, staffing changes, you run an early retirement package, you can model out staff reductions, staff additions. Um, in order to kind of play with aligning where you actually expect expenses to end up. Now, the, the hard part of your scenario is you just lost. A bunch of kids on the certified enrollment. So if you give three percent wage increases, and you lost kids. What needs to happen? Gotta reduce somewhere, right? Um, so, looking through this, we, sometimes we'll call this right sizing the budget. Um, a- and that's really just related to staffing now. This is nothing that, you know, for those outside of this, you know, whether that's administrators or citizens, might be thinking, well, like. You know, how are, why are we doing this? You know, I thought we had all kinds of money. I thought we had thirty-eight million dollars of bond issue that we just authorized. Why would we have to look at, you know, any sort of staff reductions, or. I don't even necessarily say staff reductions, right? Maybe you've got a position of attrition over each of the next couple of years that you're just able to identify. And rearrange where, where teachers are. That happens with, when you lose fifty kids, sometimes your class sizes might allow for that. Um, but the important thing to note here is that bond money, general fund money. Pebble money, statewide sales tax money, management fund money, all of your activity fee money. Those all end up in separate silos, as, as you know here, and for those in the public, it is. Often the case that districts are in and out of making reductions, whether they're doing capital project. Um, and so if, if that's the case. That as school board members, you just have to recognize, we're managing both of these at the same time. You know, we can manage our physical plant, the, the equipment or capital, um, but the one thing you can't do is say, well. Let's just delay doing that bond issue for a year. Well, I mean, you can say, we'll delay doing the bond issue for a year. And instead of doing a bond issue for a year, we're just gonna levy so that we can pay our teachers more. Doesn't work that way, uh, you know. Up until now, we haven't even really talked about tax rate. This is all based on S S A rates, enrollment. And any of those special places where you get spending authority. You get zero dollars of spending authority for raising your taxes. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way, that, that's not the way it works. So, sometimes those are hard conversations when you're starting, especially when you're in the middle of a building project. Uh, but you didn't anticipate, you know, necessarily losing this, this amount of kids, and then going into and say, well, now we gotta make. Uh, you know, adjustments to our spending, and I hate to use, you know, reductions, right? Cuz that just sounds like. There might be other creative things that you can do within your uh expense system, that doesn't mean that you're cutting staff. You know, we've seen districts go into, you know, risk-sharing pools on various projects, whether that's equipment breakdown or natural gas. And they've been allowed to save some positions by doing those. I don't know if that's on the table for you guys, I'm not here to solve. Your, how you get there, I'm here to tell you what your agreements are based on these assumptions. Um, as it sits right now. I do not have anything shown. I do not have anything shown in F Y twenty six. Um, F Y twenty seven is four hundred thousand. F Y twenty eight, a hundred, and then fifty and fifty. Part of that is due to the fact that. If you want to give three percent wages in a two and a half percent. S S A environment. I mean, i- if you got through that eleventh grade math class, you know that that does not work. Um, so even that, and then that's really what's what's happened, right? As I said, kind of supercharge this problem um from the state level. Now, how do we come up with four hundred thousand? Well, that's what the break even spending number. Shows would need to be the cut. Now. If you don't land this. Exactly the way I put it in here. It's no skin off my back, right? Um, you know, in reality, you know, if we're to really say, well, what's? Three hundred thousand of wages is probably going to have maybe not quite a hundred thousand of benefits with it, but. You know, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, with with those types of positions, right? So. That isn't just, oh, we have to find four hundred thousand of salaries, and and it might be someplace else, right? It might be. Um, that you ran an early retirement package and you had some, you know, teachers higher up on the pay scale. That you replaced at a lower level. Now. I really caution school districts on this. If you haven't been paying attention to. How many education majors are graduating within the state of Iowa? That might not be the situation that you wanted, because you might have had a teacher that. You know, really, you liked it the district and wanted to be here, and they're like, hey, we just, you just gave us a bunch of free years of insurance. I'm taking it, and then you replace somebody who's maybe making five thousand dollars less than them. They did not get the benefit that you hoped it would. Um, not to say that you shouldn't. Shouldn't incentivize, you know, teachers that have been here for a long time. They want to retire. You know, that have at it, right? I'm not here to run your run your policy there.
Are you seeing any trends in the state for offering early retirement packages?
I do, and I it's been a lot more, um, it's hasn't been an every year thing. Um, you know, in particular with your district. If you wanted to do one this year, you could, or you could wait a year and do it. Um. And part of the reason is I don't see as much spending pressure F Y twenty six for the district. But if, you know, you had a position of attrition that happened here. Every posi- and then I told this to the other school district, you know, when we have these hairy numbers out here, every position. That leaves no longer gets an automatic fill. That's not to say you won't fill it. And you you might not, you might need to, but I think as a school district who sees something like we could be needing to do cut teachers. It'd be better to not fill in a new teacher who's unknown, not plugged in, not part of the district. Unless they're moving here with six kids, right? That's that's the one you want. You want to make sure you get, um. I don't think you can do that in an interview screen though. Don't know how that's going to work. Facebook stock, there you go. Um. From from that perspective, right, you want to evaluate those to make this as soft as possible. Now. There's a lot of districts with a lot harrier numbers. Or, you know, a twenty four point four million dollar budget. I'm fairly confident. You guys as a school district, the group, the intelligence that you have, you'll figure this out, right? Will it necessarily be easy? No, but one thing we can't. You know. Automatically check off that won't happen is, well, what if? Twenty of the fifty some kids we lost last year come back? Would we need to make all those cuts? That's why I wouldn't necessarily take the knee jerk reaction and say. Go ahead and make all these adjustments in the next year. You've got a year buffer before you have to do this, so. In some ways, you're saying like, well, you're delivering the the mail a year early. Well. That's probably true. I'd rather you had it now than you found out next fall. When you're really in the middle of your building project that you have to deal with this, so. Uh, part of the, you know, the the partnership that we're offering with districts is is we'll do this every year. You know, provided that, you know, you want our services and we'll help walk through what's changed. Now. I can draw this up so that it looks great, but I I do want to take. One quick moment to just walk through. What some of this issue is, and I think Tim gave a little bit of an overview of this uh to you as well. Um, and it's not just that you're on budget guaranteed this year, but you were on it two years ago. And so when I say some of this was already supercharged in, you know, in the fall of twenty twenty, you lost. Kids at that time. And so if I look at your, this is your regular program, and that's the most important number there. In twenty twenty two, your regular program was eleven point four. Five million. Your regular program the next year was eleven point three four five. So I'm sure you told your teachers to take a one percent salary reduction that year, right? I mean, that's not what happened, right? So. Automatically going into that year, if you had a little bit of buffer within your budget, it was eaten up. Uh, by the fact that you rolled off budget guarantee. Now, this same thing. Is about to happen going into the next year. This year, your regular program in F Y twenty five is eleven point eight. Next year, or F Y twenty six, if you get two and a half percent new money, it's going to go to eleven point nine two four. What happens in twenty seven? That's not. Eleven nine two four, it's eleven nine one eight, it's down six thousand dollars. So if you anticipate that you can get through negotiations with a zero percent salary change. Then you can keep everything you have right now in terms of staffing. Now again. You have some buffer, you have some time. If these things slow down. And they take a couple of years to get done. You know, let's say instead of setting this up, which shows right now a total of six hundred thousand dollars of reductions. If I said, no, we're only going to cut. A hundred and fifty out of each of those years. By the time we get to F Y thirty. You're spending right where you need to spend. The issue you now run into is, and you can't see this is as well, the way I don't have the tax rate stabilized, is it does bump your tax rate. In order to maintain some of your ratios and it pulls down your solvency ratio and your U A B percentage. Now, neither one of those things get to what I'll call like the red level, right? Like, this is a bad deal. But. One of the things that you will be doing with your upcoming bond issue is you'll be going to the bond rating agency in order to. Achieve an investment grade rating, hopefully for your bonds. That bond rating does impact your interest rate. So if you're going to pull this thing down, you know, to ten percent. You're probably okay. If you miss and you take it down into single digits, you put yourself at a risk for a bond rating downgrade um from your current level. Now, we we also run some models where we look at your rating. We think you have a little bit of rating pressure potentially. Just because you're adding thirty eight million dollars of debt. Um, but. You know, right now, your rating is, I think, double A three. Um, but you don't have any bonds outstanding rated um with your G O rating right now. So you could slow this down, and it's not going to necessarily cause a a major concern. The problem that you do, if you take this approach. And you have another year. Where you lose thirty forty kids. If that becomes, you're spending now a hundred and two percent of your budget, right? If you're spending a hundred and two percent of your budget and eighty seventy five, eighty percent of your costs are salaries and benefits, where are you going to come up with two percent of cuts? It's going to hurt more. So. Right now. If I were saying, what should we do? Start thinking about how would we set this up? If we were going to make. The cuts in twenty seven. Start thinking, planning as administrators, what would that look like? Because the concern I have. You know, isn't so much that the state turns around and gives you four percent new money. Because I don't think that's going to happen, but that you go into next fall and you've lost another thirty kids. And in which case, these are going to get quite a bit more ugly at that point. Um. Everybody good so far. I know we're.
We. You're projecting, you're saying make four hundred thousand dollars in cuts in twenty twenty seven. I've always looked at it as. Any opportunities we have for twenty six to make cuts, and then those will be fewer cuts that. Yeah, any combination of four hundred thousand dollars in the next two years would help us in the right direction.
Yeah, I mean, I would be shocked if you couldn't find, you know, a hundred thousand with attrition or, you know, just being efficient. And then that takes that next year number down a little bit. I I would just say the minimum, and again, I kind of took this as more a a targeting. Um. What keeps you at that break even spending number? Um, but Tim's absolutely right. You don't have to spend rated a hundred. If you can spend a little bit off of that, um, it's better. All right, so we spent all that time uh talking about spending authority, expenses, targets. Uh, not recommendations of making cuts. So if somebody's listening to this. And they hear this as a recommendation that the school district needs to make four hundred thousand dollars of cuts next year, then they misheard, right? What we're saying is you've got to notice that. If we make these assumptions, you're going to need to adjust your budget by four hundred thousand dollars. I don't care how you get there. I do, but you know, I in some ways I'm agnostic to how you get there is probably a better term. Um, I do care. Um, I don't want to come across as not caring. Um, now. We get into the next concept. And it's going to flip it on its head, because I've really said, don't worry about tax rates. Well. Here's the tax rate scenario that nobody can see. Let me blow this up. Okay. So again, a a similar set of summaries here. Um, we also give you a a management fund balance um indicated right here. Now, the one thing I'll say is the district has done a really nice job. Um, and I don't know if, you know, we probably shouldn't pad Tim's ego, because it's probably Kathy doing. All of the the good work on setting the budget stuff here, but Kathy has done a great job of getting your fund balances in a place. Um, where you've got some ability to absorb some changes. Um, you know, in particular. Um, as we as we look at this next year. Um, you have a a really strong um management fund balance built. Now, when I say really strong, I'm not saying like. Where some people have management fund balances, because I actually view having two years of your management fund expenses as prudent. Um, why? Well. On about July fifteenth of every year, you spend about eighty percent of your management fund dollars right out the door, and you haven't collected any taxes. So automatically, you're you're at zero. Another reason to have it is just gives you some buffer. Because there are going to be years when you try to manage your tax rate that. Well, I'm going to need more cash reserve levy. And I'd rather not go right into raising taxes. I can take a year to kind of buffer that. Um, and we're looking at that as part of your tax rate plan. So some ways you have to thank. Kathy for being diligent there, maintaining that balance, so that as we go into F Y twenty six. I see many ways that you can keep the eighty six cent per thousand tax rate increase. While issuing the start of your new bond issue. Um. I'll walk you through the things that comprise your tax rate. Uh, for the most part, you know, you have your general fund rate, all of that you don't have control over. Uh, I said most, I should say most of that you don't have control over. The one thing you do have control over is something we call a cash reserve levy. Now. At a minimum. Districts. Should be in a position where you can levy back your special one deficit. That's the only place you can fund. Uh, your special one deficit. In this case, we do have it set a a little bit lower. Um, and that has to do with expected spending this year. You're in a really good spot. We think in F Y twenty five to absorb not having a full um cash reserve levy. Now. When Kathy gets to the budget, if she disagrees and wants more cash reserve. I will default to her, because that's her preference. She can take a little bit more cash now. And then take a little bit less management fund. Um, because what I've set up right now is a potential new debt payment. That would run about two point seven million dollars. Now. By my calculations, using the simple general information, if we saw current market rates around four and a quarter. Um, and the twenty year bond issue, it would be about a two point seven million dollar payment annually to cover out the thirty eight million. So that's the general math that I've put in right now. I've tried to keep your management fund to have at least a year's worth of expenses, probably a little bit more narrow than would be ideal. But we're also trying to keep that solvency ratio within that range. Now. You know, it looks like I've done funny math, because I can guarantee you can't pull two twelve point six. Every year, because your expenses just simply aren't that predictable. You you won't be able to do that. So this is overly idealistic, but I wanted to show. Your tax rate that would be necessary. To hold your solvency ratio, keep an adequate management fund balance and pay for your debt. Now, this does not look like. Where you were at when you were preparing for the bond referendum. So. Let me allow you all to take a deep breath, because there are a few things you didn't know when you were going through the bond referendum. One, you didn't know you were going to lose enrollment. Uh, the effect of losing enrollment this fall. Um, is eighty six, not sorry, not eighty six cents, thirty two cents of budget guarantee. So because. You go back to that U A B, remember that second line item? Is part of the regular program. That second line item is purely property taxes. So you have to levy, if you get two and a half percent new money, there'll be a thirty two cent levy for you to fund your budget guarantee this year. That has to go into the overall tax rate. So that is a pressure. You maybe could have anticipated to some extent, but you certainly didn't know it at the time you're making your tax rate promise. Um, the other issue that, you know, causes um. Some some concern there is just where your special one deficit was. It was at a low level for a couple of years when it re-normalized, that also puts some tax rate pressure on. Um. I won't go into a lot of other details on. How I think, you know, it could have been different or looked at it. That's all, you know, beside you. What we're here to do is like, well, what's the solution, right? Because that's not a solution. Right now that that you have in here. So for for me, um, it's as simple as. Changing the toggle. And now your tax rate's thirteen seventeen. I just magically made that.
So we just click the.
You just click the spreadsheet. It's it's called a magic spreadsheet, but no. Um. Your your solution there. If we hold the other legs of the stool. Meaning I got to hit my U A B. I got to hit my solvency ratio. The only other. And I want to like keep my management fund healthy. The only other thing that I can change. Then. Is the payment for debt. There is nothing that says that when you issue debt, that you have to have twenty equal annual payments. But. Recognize if you don't have equal annual payments, what are you giving up? Um, for for me in this. You would likely surcharge some additional interest costs. That may or may not be a deal breaker for you. Um, but what this would do, and we would call this. An ascending payment schedule, and I haven't, you know, I haven't gone into the details and the weeds, you know, we're not. You know, we're not probably privy to do that right now, based on kind of where our our contracts are. There's some nuances there. I don't want to get into a a ton of details there, but. Bored you with, but there's some things where I can probably give you what I call more specific tailored advice on the scenario. What I can do with you is that. There are payments that you could target. Within your funding formula, that would allow you to keep your eighty six cents per thousand tax rate promise. For sure through the, you know, about the five year period of time. Now. If. There's no way that you're going to be able to guarantee a tax rate into the future, given all the other moving things. But I think being honest with your taxpayers and setting up a debt structure that will work. To fulfill that promise um would be a very important step for the district. But do recognize that it it does have a a slight trade off. Um. You as, again, I'll use the fiduciary term as the district, you're going to have to balance these competing interests of. Taxes and interest cost on the debt. Recognizing that five years from now, eight years from now, the picture may be completely different. Interest rates might be lower, you might be able to refinance. Um, at the end of the day, I think when we when we look at the overall levy rate, that would be necessary to pay for your debt. If I pull this into back to option one, the scary scenario. And bear with me as I scroll. It's about a three dollar per thousand, two ninety nine per thousand tax rate. Um, that that would be set. If you followed a regular growth rate of, let's say, three percent. Two ninety nine this year becomes two ninety one, the year after becomes two eighty two, the year after that, two seventy five. The automatic setup of a debt payment would allow for tax rate reductions over time. So instead of taking the tax rate reduction over time. You would just be giving them less tax. You would just be giving them less tax rate now and trying to hold that rate steady both on the debt service and overall. Um, I, it's an option for you to think of again. You know, as as we kind of walk through these, you know, options and assumptions, we can certainly walk into more details if that's the the route the district wants to go. Um, but I I didn't want to leave you in a position um where you don't have any hope at the end of the scenarios. Let's go look at option two. And I'll just show you the way that the debt service levy is flowing through now. So it's two ninety nine in the first year and then one ninety one, one ninety, one eighty six, one ninety. Then kind of hovers like assuming a normal growth rate kind of in that range. Um, it might get up to. Two thirty or so with a regular growth rate. Um, but at that time, you know, we're talking ten years down the road. Could it be possible that over time you end up with a little bit of a tax rate pressure that means? You know, you become thirteen twenty three, you become thirteen twenty seven, but we're talking like five cents per thousand of a tax increase. So go ahead and do that math on your home and it's really not. A very big difference. In fact, there's things that the state has been doing over the last couple of years to lower tax rates by amounts um higher than that. So. You know, if if we also look, you know, it's your overall tax rate scenario, you've done a great job. You've held it very steady. But that's again. Uh, credit to the way Kathy's managing the budget as she knows. Some years it's more management, some years it's cash reserve, some years you're making some fluctuations, some years you were able to take more debt service levy as well. So you've been practicing like this in the past. So this isn't anything new. Um, but it it would be a little bit of a switch maybe from what you were anticipating. Um. If you had even been given, I don't know, the level of detail that you got kind of before the presentation, like, hey, we expect a. You know, a two point nine million dollar or a two point seven million dollar payment and a two ninety nine levy. I don't know what the expectations were said. Um, what I do know is that I think your public expected the tax rate to go up eighty six cents per thousand. Because that's what you used in your bond communication. And I wanted to help give a solution for this. Um. The funny part was is, you know, we're at these fall conferences and like the day before the conference. As I I I'm like dreading sending the email because I know that. This is not gonna land well for for Tim and Kathy because as I'm looking at it, I'm like, I don't think you can keep it. And I knew there were some pressures. Outside of your control. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw other advisors or people who looked at this under the bus or anything, but. Um, one of the things that that we do with districts, why we work with. Two hundred and thirty six districts on these forecasts is so that we can understand the math and help help you get through. The rock and the hard place situation. So after the conference, I'm like, Tim, you're gonna want to talk to me after the conference. And the first thing I'm like, Tim. It'll be okay. We've got a solution, you know, don't don't freak out about this. Unfortunately, Kathy wasn't able to to be there that um for that conversation, but. Um, I do think this is a solution for you. Um, you have to weigh the the pros and cons of that. So. So not only kind of looking at the horizon on what you have with tax rates, but then also focusing in on. Um, you know, how do you manage spending um as you work through this enrollment blip? My hope is you get. Thirty forty more kids next year, we rerun this model. And we don't see those sort of adjustments. Um, but because we know those adjustments is Tim had, if we can find. A position and attrition or a spot to rearrange something now, that that makes it easier because the if when I go back to these expenses. You know, yeah, it'd be really nice if you could give more than three percent wages, right? So so things that you can do just to be more efficient. And keep your teachers paid well, you know, I don't have a lot of other expenditures in the other categories, right? Those are skinny. So this is, this is really keeping the threes on it. And and make it certain that you can kind of weather the storm on enrollment. Again, the major concern. You lose another thirty kids next year and this looks a lot worse. Um, but at least. You got a year to think about it or worry about it or decide that you don't want to be the board member anymore, whatever it is. Um. Now, these these are why you guys get paid the big bucks to make these really tough decisions. So, um. You know, that being said, you know, I I did want to, I'll I'll come back. I know this is um going a little bit long. And you should know, if you got somebody from Piper here, we can tend to to go on about things. So, um. The last thing I want to hit is within the presentation, then, you know, I did give a couple uh of charts that that do show. In this case, really looking at the budget health. And, you know, everything here, when we started looking at those ratios of U A B and solvency. You know, where you've been and going forward, you know, these are pictures of health, right? You wish. Every district could see this picture of health. Now, yours probably in the upcoming five years might have a little bit more zig and zag to it. Um, but that'll be okay. Um, this is the scenario of option one debt. Um, you maintain this tax rate twelve forty one, twelve forty two, twelve thirty six. Um, you go up to uh thirteen eighteen thirteen sixteen, whatever that number is. Um, and then you you land um at an amount that's higher than the eighty plus eighty six cents. Um, if we run the option two debt scenario, and again, not looking at specific structure or rates. Just plugging in numbers that then when we look at the way we wanted the financial help to be, what was left over for debt service. Um, you can keep that eighty six cent uh promise through here. Um, so those are the charts I I pitched you to. A couple summary points and we're way out of time for talking about interest rates. Um, do know that rates are actually higher than where this fall. Um, it's not necessarily a a great thing um for for you. Um. As there's been some fluctuation there. I do anticipate we'll see some normalization here. Um, you know, I don't know what your plans will be for issuing that when you're bidding your project. Um, hopefully some of that normalizes out as we kind of get through this rocky. You know, there's the tariff, there's something else, there's, you know, so everybody's just kind of freaking out about the state of what inflation could be like. Which is causing the Fed to give a little bit more mixed signals. Now, you should not be paying attention to the Fed. With respect to where your rates are going to be, you're gonna want to follow more what's happening in the treasury market. Um, so if ten year treasuries are going up, which they have been, they're the highest that they've been since the fall of twenty twenty three. That's gonna be more um consistent with what's happening with your tax rates. Uh, the bond market is a market. It's not like a lender rate um that the Fed rates would would more or less impact. So I put a little bit of information in here on tax rates, um, other things on election dates in here and then a quick. Who I am and my old mug shot that makes me look young and skinny, but I need to. Figure out how to either get an updated mug mug shot or look young and skinny again. I don't know which one, which one's gonna come first. I'm guessing the updated. Anyway, I'll pause there. Um, if there's questions about any of this information, I'm happy to go back into it. I know this is kind of a long monologue here, but you can tell at least you were paying attention and not asleep during it. So. I could do that to people as well. Um, I don't know. Tim and Kathy, if you have anything you want to add there.
I would say the model you showed us, there was flat enrollment and two point five SSA.
Yep.
And we just have to be prepared that those numbers. Were probably not gonna get better than two point five SSA. In fact, I would probably take two point five SSA right now if I if if I were allowed to sign off on it, I I would. So just understanding that we just have to be flexible with how, that's the beauty of the model is we can, we can be flexible on SSA and and hopefully enrollment. As we talk, goes back up. Um, with regards to borrowing, you know, past a thirty eight million dollar bond, maybe interest rates, we. If we don't have to borrow it all at the same time.
Right.
So there's a possibility of borrowing enough to start the project with the idea that we're gonna go back and borrow the rest. And maybe rates would swing a little bit. That would be a a way to.
A a little bit, yeah. I mean, at this point, it it feels like rates have been fairly range bound. Um, not that they can't pop up and go down, but if we look over the last couple of years, they've been hovering in that four percent range. If they go down. Sometimes you roll the dice, you get lucky on that. And sometimes you end up in a scenario where there's what we call, um, you know, onshoring, which. Onshoring simply means that we bring manufacturing back, more manufacturing back to the United States. And if we bring more manufacturing back to the United States, that creates growth. That creates growth. That probably puts upward pressure on your tax rate. So there's upward pressure as well as what I'll call kind of downward uh pressure that both exist. Um. The rates are gonna be what they are. You know, you pick a date on the calendar, you sell the bonds. They are where they are eight years down the road, bonds become callable. We look for the next opportunity to refinance. We've refinanced a lot of that in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Across the state of Iowa, you know, districts going from three and four percent rates to one and a half to two percent rates. I have, you know, yet to have a new issued debt of bonds that wasn't refinanced at some point. Um, now, some of these debts I got issued at, you know, one point seven percent. We'll, we'll see. I really hope we don't end up in a scenario where rates. Go back down that low. But yeah, I I think from that standpoint, you've got a little bit of opportunity. Again, you won't need all the money right away. So there are some other things you can do. Um, we have a lot of districts that have twenty two year financing plans. So, well, we need some money now, we need some money the next year. This project's still gonna be going in the summer of. Twenty seven, so heck, we could sell bonds in the summer of twenty seven. Each of those years are limited to a twenty year bond issue. So if you did fiscal, sold bonds in fiscal or the summer or May of twenty seven. That payment can go out to the end of twenty seven. So you actually have fiscal forty seven um as as your final payment there. So. That can be a way to help buffer some of this pressure on the debt payments as well. So we have a lot of districts who do that and then. There's been very few of those that have done those extended plans that haven't, you know, accelerated those payments. In fact, I believe. Your last debt issue, you accelerated some of your payments as well. So, um, there's tools to manage on the debt side. That's probably the the thing that we can be the most creative with and helping with solutions. Um, if if you guys want our want our help going forward. So. Regardless, um, you know, you guys have us for the CFDM model. Um. Now, if you decide that, hey, we're, we like what you're doing, we like what what you do as a as a team, your tools that you provide, um, you know, for. For a lot of our clients that are working through bond issues, we do include the the pro model um over the next couple of years because it's complimentary. So. Otherwise, that's, that's really all I had. If we wanted to see scenarios, I'll give you that the happy one. You know, we're we're gonna add three kids per year.
You're you're not projecting.
No, I'm not. What am I? Oh, I'm back to the presentation. All right. Well, I'll think it through that. This is where I like, this is where I like, this is where I like having two screens where I can, I always have one screenshot. So if we add. Three kids per year. That's all we're adding, three kids per year. We come back into this. If you look at the change at U A B, hundred and seventy two thousand, we're adding a hundred and seventy two thousand out there in those years. So. Four hundred here. Becomes two point or negative two twenty five. Three kids.
Round them up.
Let's get five kids. And this can come to be an open enrollment. Now, it doesn't quite flow through the formulas the same, but. You know, the money spends the same is the way the way that I would, the way that I would put it. If it's five kids per year. You know, this just looks like kind of managing managing around the edges, right? Just getting a little bit tighter in the belt. Um, that would help offset, remember, lost fifty and then lost eight on open enrollment. So. I, this is where I'm not freaking out too much about about your model. I. No matter how you slice it, maybe five is rosing too each year. You know, it's a plus twenty over the next five years. You still got a couple of positions. So to Tim's earlier point. If you find something now this year in twenty six, don't just delay it. Because if you you refill it and maybe then at the next one you have to move, might be more difficult, so to speak. Um. And again, these don't have to be salaries and benefits. It always gets kind of pitched that way because that's the way. Seventy five to eighty percent of your budget lines up, but be creative there. Um. And then I think on the tax rate side, you know, the the downside of increasing enrollment is. You can see in that scenario, it put a little bit more pressure on your tax rate to add an extra five kids per year. So. Um, not a lot. No, I I still call that eighty six cents ish, right? Thirteen seventeen thirteen nineteen. I don't know. If you gotta squabble over three cents, there's there's probably bigger problems, right? Because even at the time you were setting this last year, it was just a projection, right? I mean. Best you can do and, you know, you get a new piece of information and then you have to pivot. And that's what we're gonna have to do next year. We're gonna get a new piece of information and I might come to you and say, well. Now it looks really hard to keep an eighty six cent promise, but here's what we can do over the next five years. So, you know, you communicate to the public. It's gonna be ten cents higher than we thought. We lost enrollment, our special education costs are continuing to uh increase and we value as a board. Not cutting those programs in order to deliver the education that we want in exchange for ten cents more on the tax rate. That's the fiduciary balance, right? We're trying to, you're trying to deliver world class education and rule Iowa and the state is not. Giving you a lot of favors. So because you lose fifty four kids, I didn't. It's not like it's like you lost fifty four first graders and now you can cut two sections.
Right.
Right? You you lose five kids all throughout the system and now it's like. Well, great. Now, every single, and I don't like to think of it this way, but every single one of my classrooms is less profitable. You might have lost one kid. In each of those classrooms and that adds up to needing to cut four hundred thousand out of your budget. That sucks frankly, right? Pardon the language, but it does, right? But that's the way the math works. So.
Enrollment matters.
It does. And and I can't imagine, you know, your capital investments not not paying off and, you know, showing. Communities around you that, hey, we're we're investing here. Um, and, you know. I love driving through the corner, not just for your leaves. I just think you guys have done a really cool thing with the way that. You've integrated outdoor stuff, you work with the college and, you know, it's just a great, um. It's a great scenario. It's a great place for people to come live. You see things that the community city's invested in around here. The county. Puts good investments in, you know, it's it's a, it's not like you're going to die on the vine, right, as a school district. Like. You can put this investment in and expect that, you know, hopefully some some housing follows. Anyway, I told you forty five minutes, maybe a little bit over that. So.
Okay. Uh, I'll pause in case there's questions uh that we have.
I just want to comment that the board is committed to financial responsibility, which is one of the reasons why we invited you to come. Um, we are not trying to keep secrets from the district. We want to be really transparent that this year was extremely unique with. Uh, much larger than anticipated um different enrollment and that was for, we've talked about this in previous meetings, but for a number of factors. Um, and we're committed to building a new school. To the recommendations that were made by our facility committee that spent more than half a year. Carefully designing and we're committed to the long term financial stability of our district. So. Thanks for being a partner in that and and helping, helping us know what our options are.
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me.
And it's an impressive tool. I just I'm amazed by what you're providing for school districts. So, thank you.
Yeah, we we set out to do it free. We're like, yeah, how many hours to to do this thing and. Think Larry and I underestimated it. You can tell my time underestimates uh estimations happened. And so we've we were committed to giving a free model to every school district across the state. So. That's just the place we want to be at. We think it's important. And we're happy that you guys brought us along to, you know, help go into more detail. Yes, you can figure this out. Tim can figure this out. Kathy can figure this out. It's. It's not overly complicated. We just add some experience with the scenarios that we're able to work through. So glad you invested in that. So thanks for trusting us to help. Appreciate it.
Do you have any sense of if the uh SSA will be set on a timely basis this year?
Oh, I haven't. No, it will not. Um, it's the bargaining chip, right? Um, I I don't think you're going to know. Um. That being said, it could be low enough that everybody loves it and it gets pushed through. That's my concern, right? So. Are there any voices that are gonna stand up and fight for something higher than two and a half percent? And can it get any traction? If it gets set early, you're not, I don't think we're gonna love the result. So.
Very good.
Um, that's not my crystal ball, but that's my concern. But so. Um, it's a, it's a really tough fight, right? We've, as you may know, the revenue estimating committee. At the state came out with, you know, revenue forecast that does not bode well for. Additional dollars just flying to the school districts. So I really don't know how. It's all going to work, other than. So I really don't know how it's all going to work, other than. You know, changing the way that we're doing income taxes, which. Seems like that's greased, but you noticed that it was not one of the priorities that showed up in the, you know, the. The main thing is property taxes that they're going after, so I don't know what that, what that means. So, we'll see if income tax continues to be on the chopping block. Those, those are all, again, state general dollars that, that need to be there in order to fund education. I wish I was more optimistic, Matt. At one time, I considered myself an optimist on school funding, and it's not, not there anymore.
Thank you.
Yeah.
By leave, did you take back?
I did.
So moving on, we'll move on to new business. The first item is to set public hearing dates for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, we need for the type of calendar, hours or days, and then also. And the school calendar, and set a budget hearing for the twenty-five, twenty-six school budget. And this is the second year of this process.
Oh, the second year of the process, so the uh, um. Two public hearings for the, for the calendars, I would say, let's just do those back to back. At the next month's meeting, and so put them at the beginning, my recommendation is to be right at six thirty. We'll do the hours versus the days, then we'll go into the actual public hearing for the calendar, which samples in the, in the uh work packet. And I'll talk about that when we get to that agenda. The next thing is we have to have two budget hearings, and this is kind of a new process. We have to get the budget, we have to complete the budget, and when I say we, I think most people know, mostly Kathy um does that. But to get it, and Kathy, that's usually out February in a good year. So it's February, and it's just tight for us to, for mostly Kathy to have it ready to go by the, by the March meeting. So what we did last year was, uh, we had a, the first hearing was like a meeting in March. Um, which we could do like, uh, the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first, and then we would have the second hearing, which is all part of the process. At the regular meeting on April fourteenth, which would give us our two public hearings before the budget is due on, at the end of April. So, um, but based on board member availability, I throw those dates out. And with recommendations, maybe we could pick March twenty-first or thirty-first as the first one. Knowing that, knowing that even if that's in the middle of the day, the second hearing would be done at night. So that would give people the option to attend either one of those hearings.
So would you like for us to discuss our availability?
So, does anyone have a blackout date for either of those Mondays, March twenty-fourth? Or the thirty-first?
Twenty-fourth would be a lot better date for me than the thirty-first, I might be traveling on the thirty-first.
Okay. Anybody else, any conflicts to speak of?
No difference for me.
I don't have a preference, either one would work.
Okay.
No expected conflicts.
Okay, so. I think it sounds good to go with Monday, March twenty-fourth. Carol's calendar needs.
So now we probably just did a motion for to set those public hearings.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on the budget for twelve o'clock noon on March twenty-fourth.
And then also. Mention the regular meeting, right?
And these need to be separate.
I don't know if they need to be separate or not, uh, we have to do four of them, so. It's fine if you wanna do them all separate, and so we could knock them off one at a time.
Okay, let's go for one at a time. There's been a motion.
On second.
Okay, any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so. The first one.
So I'm making a motion to have our second hearing on Monday, April. Fourteenth.
At, at, we're gonna do that at the start, so five thirty.
Five, the, we're doing it at five thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, at five thirty before the regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Carol, yeah. Any comments? Hearing now, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yeah, so we need uh recommendation now to set the public hearing for the uh six thirty on February tenth. We need one for the type of calendar, and then we'll leave a second one for the actual calendar.
Yep, so February tenth is our, just to add a note, that's our regular board meeting.
Yes. Is that one at six thirty or five thirty?
That's at six thirty.
We'll make a motion to have the public hearing for the hours or days prior to the board meeting, February tenth at six thirty.
I'll second.
Any further comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And for the next, the last public hearing, you could just make a motion to follow the first public hearing.
I'll make that motion for the school calendar to follow the public hearing on the hours and days on February, Monday, February tenth.
One second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We did it. Okay, next, under new business is to review the first draft of the school calendar for. Twenty-five, it should say twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yeah, sure.
And it goes on the actual.
It does on the actual document. Right.
Okay.
Okay, so. Yeah, Tim, talk us through it.
So, just a couple of things to remember on the calendar, state law, we're not allowed to start before August twenty-third. So that's a Saturday, when I, of course, start on a Saturday, but we do start on a Monday, uh, August twenty-fifth, which makes up for a full week of school. And Carol, I see you nodding with her, that is tough. Um, it would be, it would always be the preference to have four days or, or less uh of school, just to kind of get everybody in the routine. Um, but unfortunately, it just gets tight with getting your days in uh with the way the calendar sets up, and we'll talk about that here in a sec.
And, you, there will be one really first big first week of school, but then Labor Day, it, the next week is a forty-week.
That's, that's true.
Yeah, it would.
That's true.
I don't know if that eases the, the blow of having a five-day for the fir- week for the first week.
It's tough for those students to get used to getting up in the morning and getting to five days of school the first week.
Yeah, so, so makes for a long first week of school. Uh, other product highlights, um, this calendar does replace the uh compensation day for conferences on the Wednesday. November twenty-six, which is the day before Thanksgiving, we did that this year for the first time, and, and got some very positive feedback. Folks did like having that extra day at Thanksgiving. Um, Christmas.
I think a big reason why that works is because of that teacher in-service day on the seventh.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, having the PD day on the seventh, um, makes that work out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Christmas and, and New Year's Day are both on Thursdays. So, uh, we talked with the admin team about school on December twenty-second or twenty-third. I know people really enjoyed having two full weeks off this year. Um, just makes it tough with the days to do that, so, um, that's. That's our recommendation. Um, and then you move through, uh, you still have kind of the uh typical. Um, we have a couple of four-day weekends um on our calendar in February and April. And then your last day of school on this calendar is, um. I've got this right, looking at it, looks like it's about uh May twenty-first. Well, I've gotta double check that, could be May twenty. On my count here. But that puts us, that gives us one to two days before, um. Before Memorial Day, and of course, we anticipate having snow makeup, that you probably have school that full week regardless of, of where. Uh, the school year ends at.
So with the, with this draft, um. Is the semester break. That's like it was the share where the first semester ended before the holiday break.
That is something that the high school works on and decides outside of, of how we make the calendar.
Okay, so that's irrelevant to this. Okay.
Although, do the number of days, contact days before I have Christmas factor into that, or?
It was unbalanced this year, I don't remember the exact numbers, it was, it was not a, it was not close. I got it on our DLP agenda for tomorrow, we'll talk about how people thought it went, so.
We don't need, that's irrelevant then, I didn't mean to. Bring up.
I suppose having those two days before, uh, in December of that week would make it. So, easier to, to, gives you a smidge more days for semester. So, um, but principals will look at this with their building leadership teams, I'll look at it with district leadership team. Uh, we'll have a recommendation ready for February, just kind of wanted to let the board.
Yeah.
Get a, get a view for what it is, it's always possible, we talked about it last year, I don't know how possible, but. The start date is set by the state legislator. It's in, the state fair would be over August seventh. If there was any kind of opportunity where changing the state law that said we could. Instead of August twenty-third, if we could start the Tuesday or the Wednesday after the state fair. You'd probably jump at that and, and put those days there and come up with a calendar that was even more flexible. So, but I'm not gonna bank on that, we talked a lot about that last year, and then it didn't happen, so I don't need to. Worry about stuff that probably will never happen.
Uh-huh, any other questions or comments about this first look?
Actually like the way the holiday, well, the winter holiday break lands, um. Two weeks seems great until you're trying to work over a week of that while your children are still at home, so.
Yeah, and feeding your children at home.
All of the above. So I actually think the break, the way it's laid out. Plays out very nicely. Do you think ending on, hypothetically, ending on the twentieth, twenty-first? That sounds. Early in what I remember going to school, I remember being in school on June something, almost every year, so.
Well, just remember that, you know, typically we've had snow days. Not yet this year, well, we had an early, one early hour, but, um. There's a lot of variables.
Yes.
That can change the draft. Okay, we'll keep your eyes and ears open in the community as you interact with people, and we'll just wait to revisit this in February. Um, anything else about the first, that first draft?
No.
Okay.
I would just note that the first week of school, the third day that week, the Wednesday should be the twenty-seventh, not the twenty-eighth, followed by the twenty-eighth. I don't think it makes a huge difference, but. Yeah, but we always.
If you're good at catching details like that. Same thing in January, there's two thirteens.
That January in-service day on the nineteenth, is there a specific topic that happens at that day? That couldn't be moved into December to be like December twenty-third, and, and in-service day before and after break?
Uh, no, we, each building is that differently, but there's a, uh. Go inside, I'm looking at my principals if they want to remind me of that.
Yeah, if we moved that in-service date to right before Christmas, a lot of people would take personal days and not attend. And so then. We wouldn't get much out of the professional development day, I'm afraid.
This is just a review, we don't need to.
No action needs to be taken. Okay, so next on the agenda is the first reading of board policy for a six-point-one, and this is our cell phone policy.
Uh, this is cell phones issued to staff. Um, so this pretty, uh, we've had two different ways we've done cell phones. We provide cell phones for about twelve employees, and, um, so that means we pay, think about forty-five dollars a month for a cell phone. And then those employees carry two cell phones around, and those are mostly principals and superintendent and things like that. And, uh, some of us don't care for that, and, um, we actually have other employees that we just give them a stipend of thirty dollars a month. So, um, as it turns out now, I use my personal number, that's the one I give out to people, um. But my proposal would be for this summer just to have a switch and just provide stipends for everybody. And kind of get out of the business of, of district cell phones, we probably maintain one or two. For emergencies and stuff as a, as an idea, but not have issued to staff. I know one of the things that comes up is, well, if I do some communications to people. Uh, I might give out my cell number then to somebody who's gonna call me at two AM. And, uh, because there are people like that, and, um. There's, there's options for, if we had a, a phone you could check out for the district, and Sean's also, uh, who's not available tonight. We've talked about this for a while with transportation about, um, just having, uh, the ability to text people from your computer. Without, uh, having it be on your phone. So, um, there's some kind of workarounds that we can work with, yeah, that's that. Uh, this is the first read on this policy, I've emailed the principals and then we'll talk more about it. We may, we meet this Thursday and kind of talk about, uh, any other concerns that folks have. But for the most part, uh, I just did a quick email survey, and a lot of people were, yeah, I don't really wanna carry two phones. And so they're supposed to start clapping now, but they're.
Yeah, it seems cumbersome to me to carry two phones.
But tho- tho- those and, uh, yeah. So, we'll bring that back next month and, and maybe have some more stuff to add.
Any other questions or comments about the policy?
Maybe just to note that this is not the kind of cell phone policy the legislature is diving into this week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this is pretty low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move that we approved the first reading board policy for a six-point-one on cell phone policy for district employees.
No second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, approved tuition reimbursement agreement for hard-to-fill position. And we have a request for tuition reimbursement. Um, from Sarah Ellsbrun. Sure, for training licensure and or endorsement.
Yeah. Um, we have a couple of tuition reimbursement agreements with staff members, staff members that we've hired that we need to. Uh, have asked to teach something that they're not certified in, and, uh, because we do the ask, then we started to do tuition reimbursement. I think we have two of these active right now. Um, this position that Sarah, uh. Is, uh, who requested to trans- transfer into, is a position that's been hard to fill for three years. And, uh, so, we're delighted that, although we have a very nice solution this year, um.
But it's not a long.
It's not a long term, so thank you, it's not a long-term solution, um. Getting somebody who wants to do the job, uh, is important, and Sarah did a great job with it. So the next two things, the first one is a tuition reimbursement, um, for the classes that she has to take to get her license, uh, endorsement added. And then the second one will be to, uh, do the incentive, because it is a hard-to-fill position. And we do have a few of these, uh, incentive agreements in place where we're reimbursing employees. Uh, or not reimbursing, we're, we're paying employees, uh, to fill positions that, that we, uh, to attract for hard-to-fill positions.
Yeah, I, I wanna fully support teachers that are needing additional training. Licenseur, et cetera. Retention is most important to me, right? Right, so I think this is. Right, so I think this is an investment well spent.
Yeah, and if there were any concern that we're. Paying one individual for just getting ready to do their own job, I think I would just ask, well, is anybody else willing to do that job?
We've been looking three years.
And that's why we've come to this.
Right.
I appreciate. Very challenging position and she will be excellent on that, she won.
Well, uh, move to approve the tuition reimbursement agreement uh under nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And next is the retention incentive. Um.
Move to approve the incentive as well.
And I'll second.
Okay, any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the superintendent's report.
Uh, so uh, I just kept this out today, uh, but positive. Curtis Johnson's feeling po- positive about the boiler at West Side. Um, just kind of reminder, we've got two boilers, one is the one that's leaking. And uh, uh, it's not getting any better, but it's also not getting any worse, so we feel we're knocking on wood that that's gonna. Uh, he even went ahead to say, yeah, it might even make it two years, so um. Uh, so that, we're, we're gonna take that and be happy with it. Um, I know Mr. Riley's here, he can. Also add to this, but I asked Mr. Riley just a scheduling update for the. Uh, start of twenty-five, twenty-six when this school works as an independent without a conference. And we've got twelve out of fourteen varsity volleyball dates filled, still working on lower levels. Um, good point made about, uh, it's not that we need to be at a cross, in a conference meet, but. For cross-country especially, you wanna have some competition to fill that void of a conference meet. Um. Football, we don't have to worry about, is that all be done by the state and basketball. Wrestling, baseball, softball will be a process, so I will. Now, now that I've read it all, I've said it all, is there anything you need to add to that, Mr. Riley?
No, I just think also, you know, in that part of the document, we just. We're gonna have to be prepared for some more travel, uh, which has. Cost implications and some other pieces and at the end of time uh to be creative and then also if there's more travel, that means. Less revenue for home events, uh, which are a big part of how we pay. For all our programs in terms of being a really broad base. It's a word, we're long and lean in terms of offering a lot of activities and trying to do so, so it's. Budgetarily, we'll, we'll get it figured out, but it's.
Mm-hmm, you think we'll have to give up home dates to get.
I, I think it's in a couple sports. Uh, in order for us to find competitions, we're gonna have to play, play some neutral site competitions, for example, our boy the basketball team, obviously with one less team in the conference. Uh, this year is playing at NIAC and playing Spencer, uh, right? Pretty fortunate to be able to do that, just don't follow that is. NIAC is great to let us use their facility, but part of it is they want to gate revenue. Uh, cover their costs for that part, but we still end up being split the costs. Uh, for officials, so with Spencer, Spencer's great to work with and some of the other schools, but um, those are just certain things that. As Tim alluded to, for our conference competitions, uh, they come at a time as you're preparing for postseason. Um, and how and what we're gonna do in, in those kinds of sports where we have a, a conference championship, a tournament. Or meet or something like that, that see if we can find someplace to be.
Mm-hmm. What sport is gonna be the most difficult? To schedule?
Um, I think both basketball as well as baseball and softball. I would have said volleyball if you'd asked me that two months ago, but that actually came together pretty well. Um. The issue there is a gap in the schedule as far as late.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the month of October for a period of time, we had no events scheduled. Um, we needed to make sure we find it some sort or form of competition, the week of the conference volleyball tournament or what that would be. Or we're gonna have to travel all the way to Knoxville for a tournament. Um, but we're gonna get a tournament in so we can still hope the kids prepare and try to turn it into. Um, something that that could be good and positive and some other pieces with that, so um. Because that gap is there, everybody wants to play early in the season.
Yeah.
Or they wanna play on the days that they have available on the, the non-conference and they don't want. So, uh, that, that's gonna be tricky and like I said, the. Softball's a, a little bit different than baseball in that you don't have all the pitching rotation stuff where it's all for the baseball. Um. Baseball could be a real challenge where you, you're, you're gonna have dates where all of a sudden you got five nights and all the teams would love to be able to play you. You don't have pitching to do that, there's no way that you can do it, and then you'll have one that we, where you're gonna have. Nothing.
Yeah.
So. It's a little different, but wrestling comes out and works out okay because hopefully you can jump in and. You know, the thing that people really like in wrestling right now is not just one dual meet, they like a triangular or a quad, so we can get more matches for our kids for efficiency. But I think we'll be able to jump in to a few of those and hopefully get, you know, a couple meets. That we can get lined up to be able to host ourselves and get schools to come to, but.
Ninety percent of that's done on Saturday, I mean, all of our Saturdays won't be affected by the conference.
No, shouldn't be. No, we should be okay in terms of the schedule for, for sport right, like wrestling.
So Jake, I'm curious, how have you started scheduling for middle school and what's that been like for you?
Um, it's, I was kind of curious, I had uh, you know, some reservations and um, some. Uh, reason for concern there so far, uh, so good, I've shared with uh some other. Groups that, you know, just kind of as, you know, we continue to meet as, you know. Soon to be nonexistent or at least Iowa Conference ADs, um, from a middle school standpoint that. Um, as we all work together with our schedules that still wanna be included.
It's working out.
And, and, and so far so good, I mean, maybe, you know, the example I would give you, um. If you're lock-on, for example, you know, your interest in. At a middle school standpoint and dropping decor in favor of picking up your conference. Uh, west, you know, west central kind of a situation is not advantageous to.
Right.
You as lock-on, so.
Right.
Um, in that regard. You know, I, it, it's been a pleasant surprise, um, that we've been able to. Uh, for the most part, do those kinds of things now. Uh, with that being said, you know, over the course of this past uh four or five months. You know, just as I'm thinking about middle school things and opportunities to get. Middle school kids opportunities to play, um, we, we have explored some. Uh, we, we will play Cedar Falls and uh boys' basketball. Uh, this, this year, um, we've added Waverly for a second date there for situations for, let's, let's talk, for example, for example, boys' basketball. Those are our dates and competitions where we would hope to get four games uh a night and, and play the B C and D. Uh, which is uh, uh, really good for our kids, um. In a way that, you know, for example, some of the other schools that we play that, you know, wanna play a game in two quarters.
Right.
And such, so, um. As I look into the future, um, you know, m- maybe some, some subtle. Changes there and, and, and building some good relationships with, again, schools like Cedar Falls. Uh, that kind of stuff, which is, you know, seems like a long ways away, but in all honesty, looking at the travel time versus where we really shall rock.
It's a wash.
Fair, fairly negligible.
Yeah.
Difference there and stuff, and those, those ADs at those schools have been. Good to work with so far and uh appreciate uh their time and attention.
Are they, is this home and palm or we?
It'd be like seventh grade in one location, eighth grade in another location, something like that, you know.
Well, thank you both for all the work that you're doing to build, maintain relationships. I know it's a. Amount of extra work for you in this unique year, so thank you. Um, I think we're gonna have to get really creative on. Revenue and maximizing things that we can host here and. I don't know. Planning.
Right, cause transportation costs will be up too.
Well, right, and I think we may need to be creative with van use versus bus use. Um. But also that takes drivers and we, yeah, but. We, we need to be thinking all the time of efficiencies.
Adam, when you've been working on the schedule so far. Has it been thinking one year ahead or are we scheduling two years at a time where it's like, we'll get one year then? They know it's one year time, right?
Yeah. There are a few things and that's very just goodwill of working in some of the places where. And we're still prioritizing the teams that have always continued to play us in non-conference competition. We're absolutely gonna continue to try to work and, and maintain a relationship with them. In, in that regard. Uh, in relation to what we just want, since you're non-conference, I wanna play early in here and, and we're, we're gonna continue to play. Those schools that have been. Good to work with from an outcoming standpoint.
Yeah.
Elevator principal of hosting does close on the fifteenth. Um. We're gonna s- uh, s- do some preliminary screening uh next Monday and we'll have. Three to four, probably four candidates in the district on January twenty-ninth for in-person interviews and we're on track to have a recommendation to the board for the February campaign. So, um, I think I shared, I think we're got about nine applicants, um, and uh. Some folks that have experience and so it'll be good, it'll be a good pull. I mean, I'm. Pleasantly sup- pleasantly, I'm pleased.
And that we have more than a, a couple applicants.
Yeah.
It feels like that.
Yeah.
A good number.
So I think the rest of the stuff, I just kind of put some notes about things that are in the board packet. Um. So.
Can you talk a little bit? So we heard from Travis tonight. And there's notes about using the tool. Um, can you talk a little bit about the, the school? PDF sketch that is in the. The packet?
Yes, um, you know, the uh, just uh, among other things, Curtis hadn't seen it, but. Um, we're still kind of fine tuning uh with Nick. And one of the, one of the big movements on this was we had moved. The uh basketball courts over by the, or the playground, excuse me. Um, over by the tennis courts because we're gonna have to use tennis courts and playground equipment. Um, and wherever they are, we want the playground by the tennis courts. This just puts the tennis courts back by the school, but it also puts in. A couple of basketball courts, so. Not a big change, but just kind of understand there'll be small tweaks like that and um. Roz asked, is this ready for publication? And we'll get it on a website, but as long as people understand we're still evolving, we haven't even drawn the incentive. There's a lot of work to do, but as I was sharing it with Curtis, cause he had, uh, he needed to know some of that stuff and um. So I just put it in the board packet to kind of represent even small little things. You're probably not gonna see every little thing that changes. Um, my comment to Nick was, okay, so. The playground was by the school, we moved it to the east and now he's come and moved it back to the west and I said something like. You know, I'm sorry you're doing it back and forth, and he said, well, it's not the first time that I've done something and then undone it, um, so. But it's not a dramatic change at all, um. So we'll just continue and, and uh, we've got some information update for the public I've shared with the board, so we'll get that out um. As well, and we continue. Um, I should say, um, there's an opportunity to meet with the folks from Myron. Tomorrow virtually at nine AM and I could have one more board member join me. Carol is on that and the discussion is just gonna be on, on. Uh, what's a green, like solar, geothermal, just different solutions and where they fit the project.
I would be interested in attending.
Okay, I, I will add. Uh, Cindy, then I won't invite anybody else cause I would have to post it. Hope everybody, yeah. Um.
And that, can you save that timing?
It's nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
And we are just in the process now of, of Nick meeting, some emergent meeting with different people at John Klein and getting. Input, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense that they're, this is gonna be a continuing.
Uh, it'll continue, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, we're just all so excited and.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Right now, but it takes time.
And getting it right with the input from the people who uh deal with. Playground issues and lunchroom issues and classroom issues every day is, is. The, of utmost importance.
Yeah, he has a process, absolutely. Okay. It was Tim. And then finally. Kathy with our financial report.
Shall I bore you some?
Please.
No, if you take a look at the decor cash flow, I wanna first uh look at the revenues. If you take a look into December, you see that dark box with the eight hundred thirty-four, four fifty. We received our instructional support surtax early, so last year we didn't get it until January. That looks like our revenues went way up.
But they didn't.
They did. Next, next month it'll level off again. So, it's, it's all about consistency and this one threw me off, so.
Yeah.
But if you take a look at the balances, you know, we're, we're remaining constant. Um. We talked about our bond rating, you know, that's what we're always looking for is making sure our solvency, solvency ratio is there. Um, I think our bond rate went up just a little bit over the last year because we were not notified, I think it was in. March of April last year, um. Eight, double eight plus. We call it our A three.
I thought it was double eight plus, but I don't remember my words.
Um, and again, you know, we've used Pepper and, and um, saved to purchase the, the property, one was the, this. Building and bus garage and then it was the Highbury Island, who's, we're trying to, trying to make strides and keep everything. Going.
We've spent a lot of action the last few years. All important investments. What other questions do we have for Kathy? Kathy, we're lucky to have you. Thank you for all you do to keep everything balanced and stable and steady. It's appreciated and obviously recognized by experts in the state. So, thank you. Okay, seeing that we've come to the end of our agenda, I officially joined the meeting.